You're here and I have 3:29. We're ten seconds early, we can call it 3:30. Okay. I'm gonna call this special meeting in town council, town courtside to order at 3:30, June 38, 2014. Anyone in the audience who should give the invocation tonight, this afternoon? Do you want to do this in the pledge?
Wait a minute.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. Yes, alright. Did you stand for the prayer?
Father, we come before you today to the business of the town, of the people. The town is not a town without its residents. Father, help us to remember that we're a unit, not a one, not eyes, but we. We bring before you all our problems and lay them at your feet. Now, Father, just bless us as we work together for this day and problems ahead of us. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will we start, please, off the row?
Mayor Foster.
There.
Vice Mayor Dewitt.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Kirk.
Here.
Councilmember Orgeron.
Here.
Councilmember Scott.
Here.
Councilmember Timberland.
Here.
Motion on the agenda?
I move, we accept the agenda presented.
They have moved and seconded approved the agenda as presented, all in favor, signified by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, unanimous? Okay, now, under administrative items, there's a discussion of the litigation involving me, and so therefore, I am going to recuse myself from that discussion. However, before I do, since there's a lot of discussion going to occur, above me, I have presented the letter to the clerk to read into the record of the town meeting before I do recuse myself. Tina, would you read the letter?
Would you like me to, Mayor?
You would be good.
Okay, so Tina can keep on with the minutes. June 20th, 2014, this is addressed to Skylar Miller, town manager, town courtside. Mr. Miller, Mr. Miller, I want to clarify my position on the litigation of the waste treatment loan. The loan is opposed by a majority of the citizens of Courtside. The opposition is not actually to the project or the loan, but the rate structure that has been applied to repay the loan. Mr. Orgeron's assertion that he doesn't care if the rate puts RV parks out of business has alarmed a huge portion of the community. The people of this community recognize that we are a tourist-oriented community, and we depend on the RV park industry to provide facilities to our winter visitors. The rates are in place, the rates that are in place are unsustainable by the operator of these parks. The efforts of some of the parks to mitigate the impact of these rates by closing sewer connections has been met in recent days by abusive and punitive rates and fees enacted by town government in an attempt to force acceptance of the rates and the destruction of their businesses. I have offered an alternative method of repayment that will lessen the impact of utility customers. I have also asked for a complete review of the expenses of the utility department in an attempt to determine if there are any ways to reduce the cost of operation of these departments. There has been no serious consideration given to these requests. Ed Foster, Mayor, Town Courtside.
Thank you. Alright, and with that, I recuse myself for the reason that I am party to the litigation and should not be part of this discussion.
Okay.
Mike, can we also note that this letter was on town letterhead, which the mayor has been asked, told not to write letters on town letterhead?
No, no need.
Also be in the record?
So, I'd like to direct Mr. Miller, please, sir, to check with council again, this is an illegal use of the town letterhead. Mr. Foster has been notified duly, as have all state agencies across the state. This is an illegal use of this town letterhead.
We can certainly discuss that in further detail with town attorneys.
Thank you.
Oh, are they not over there?
Turn it up, it's too low. Okay. Patricia, this is Mike Dewitt, go ahead.
Are you ready to give an update on the litigation? I'm having a little bit of trouble hearing all the members of council, so I'm sorry if I interrupted.
We can hear you very clearly, because what we've done is taken one of the microphones and put it close to the phone, so it comes clearly, clear out into the audience, the public area. Can everybody hear? Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Patricia.
Okay, I'd like to clarify what the litigation is about. The litigation is about the scope of mayoral power. Specifically, last December, the council passed an emergency resolution. Six members of the council voted for it, the mayor voted against it. The mayor believes pursuant to Article 9 of the Arizona Resilience Statute that he has authority to veto emergency measures and other resolutions. The Superior Court in Lake Hattiesut City disagreed with the mayor and dismissed the entire case. The mayor has since appealed, arguing that he does have a veto right, and by virtue of his veto, the emergency measure that was passed by the majority of the council and met all other legal requirements for an emergency measure and under the legal requirements should become immediately effective, but for the issue of who has to sign the emergency measure. The vice mayor signed the emergency measure before a temporary restraining order was issued. The emergency measure dealt with WISA loan and the USDA grant, which would allow for the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant. The emergency measure did not deal with rates, sewage rates or water rates. So, it certainly has an impact on whether or not the town will be able to expand sewage water treatment plant, but that is not the immediate issue of the appeal.
Sewer treatment plant.
And the mayor doesn't, the mayor may withdraw the appeal, the mayor may make a lot of decisions. However, the reason that the project is being stalled with regard to the water treatment plant is because until there's a final decision from the court or until the mayor withdraws his appeal, the USDA and WISA will not allow us to draw upon the funds, because the funds are indirectly influenced by the litigation. In essence, we cannot give a legal opinion that there is no legal controversy in connection with the funds, because this litigation relates to the emergency measure that would allow the town to draw upon the funds.
Litigation does not stop the action. The litigation is simply, we're simply unable to give the opinion that USDA requires that there's no litigation impacting this action.
And as a result of the fact that this litigation impacts the action, the funds have not been released, the water treatment improvements have not, have not taken place, and, and at this time, the project is on hold. So, and to clarify, when I say water treatment, I actually mean sewer. My understanding is that from the letter that Mr. Miller read into the record, that Mayor Foster is concerned about the sewer rates. The, my understanding of the loan and grant structure is that it is a 40-year loan, and the calculations that have been done are independent of the previous rate structure that was put into place before the emergency measure was passed. Now, are there questions that I can answer about the litigation?
Councilmember Kirk. An emergency measure for all clarification passed by six members of the council on an emergency basis, which it did have made that referendum null and void, because an emergency measure is referendum proof, correct?
I'm sorry, I'm not clear on what the question was.
I'm sorry, the referendum has...
Do you want to repeat the question?
Sure. The measure passed by this council, six to one, on an emergency basis, made it a referendum proof item, correct?
That is correct, yes.
Thank you.
More questions from the area? Keep going.
I think that that gives you basically the overview of the litigation and the connection of that between the sewer issues that we're gonna discuss today that relate to the meetings with the USDA and WISA. But, I'm happy to field additional questions as they come up. My understanding is Mr. Miller will be discussing those meetings?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
Well then, Mr. Miller, would you please read the memorandum into the records, please?
Certainly. This is memorandum, memorandum, from the desk of Skylar Miller, Courtside Town Manager. This is to Mayor and Town Council regarding summary of meeting between Courtside and USDA and WIFA, which occurred on June 11th, 2014. The memorandum is dated June 18th, 2014. On June 11th, 2014, Town Manager Skylar Miller, Town Attorney Patricia Roman, Town Engineer Kevin Murphy, and Water Engineering Consultant Michael Krebs attended separate meetings with representatives of the USDA and WIFA. The primary purposes of the meetings were to introduce town staff to members of the agencies, update the agencies on the status of the town's decision to enter into loan and grant agreements for repairs and expansion of the wastewater treatment facility, advise the agencies of grant agreements for repairs and expansion of the wastewater treatment facility, advise the agencies of issues and foster be Courtside and the status of that litigation, learn from the agencies the impact of that litigation on the availability of previously allocated funds, and whether the agencies could partner in future projects with the town. Meeting with USDA. Nancy Verris, Endeavor steward of the USDA, met with the Courtside team. The USDA acknowledged that the loan and match and grant had taken years to coordinate. They were very clear that they want to see Courtside's wastewater treatment project move ahead. However, they were visibly upset by the ongoing litigation of Foster v. Courtside, which had prevented the loan agreement transaction from closing. Despite the majority of the council approving the loan and project, they were concerned about the mayor and a faction of RV park owners impeding the necessary repairs. Until the litigation is resolved, the USDA loan cannot be closed. The regional office has reported that the national office about the fact that the obligated funds have not been dispersed. Ms. Verris made clear that the funds are not obligated to the town indefinitely, and that if the town does not move forward with the wastewater treatment project, the funds will eventually be withdrawn. USDA could not comment to a specific timeframe with regards to how long the funds would continue to be available. USDA clarified that the interest rate for the loan will be that of December 2013, or the current rate when the funds were drawn down, depending on which is lower. Just to note, interest rates are rising. Town Engineer Murphy advised that construction projects are increasing in cost. He has observed a 20% increase in construction costs so far in 2014. He also noted that the town is facing interim repair costs, and that the continued deterioration of the plant is costing the town money. He indicated that it is likely that the overall cost of the project could also increase because of the deterioration. The longer the town waits to commence the project, the more costly the project will be for the town. Additionally, the current grants and loans will be inadequate to complete the project. The USDA advised that Courtside probably will not qualify for more grants on this project to bridge the increased costs. At this time, most projects are getting 30% grants and 70% loans. Courtside benefited from a 50%-50% arrangement. The USDA cannot speculate about whether Courtside could be eligible for more loans. Mike Krebs observed that once the project is completed, the town will encounter tremendous energy savings. Currently, the wastewater secondary treatment system relies on one basin with a 255 horsepower system, which is three aerators and a mixer, whereas the new secondary system will have two basins with a fine bubble aerator and two mixers, for a total of 95 horsepower per basin. This is critical, because the low flow time of year only requires 95 horsepower, while peak flow periods will require 190. Understand that these are many, excuse me, understand that there are many variables that impact energy consumption. Current flow calculations, based on how the system is currently being ran, suggest that this will save the town between 15,000 and 30,000 annually in energy costs. Concerns remain about the project. One, delays increase construction costs. Two, delays mean increased deterioration and more expensive repairs. Three, no new housing developments or businesses can be added to the sewer system that have not already been calculated, and I did elaborate there. Three, or, excuse me, four, no additional septic tanks may be added to the community because of pollution issues. Five, new growth is impossible until the wastewater treatment plant is repaired and expanded. Six, without new growth, there is little economic development opportunity. Seven, the town has not yet lost the loan and grant, but the risk of the funds will be withdrawing increases as time passes. Eight, the town is highly unlikely to receive any additional grants for the increased cost. Nine, the town may not be eligible for additional loan monies. Ten, even if the town receives additional loans, there's a chance they will be at higher interest rates, which means greater overall cost to the community. Eleven, current sewage rates are not significantly impacted by the 40-year repayment schedule for the current USDA loan. The town is currently obligated to pay back approximately $900,000 to WIFA that has been spent to date. The balance of the WIFA loan available for the wastewater treatment plant rehab and expansion is approximately $600,000. Twelve, a new loan to cover the increased expenses due to the delay of the project may only be available through WIFA, which has a maximum 20-year length, which is short, which is a shorter repayment period than the terms of USDA, which would have a greater impact on customer rates.
Excuse me, can you take a pause just one moment?
Certainly.
I'd like to point out that it is town policy, photographers and press, please stay in the back of the room. There are two people in the very front row, both taking continuous...
That's not codified, Mike.
I beg your pardon?
I said that's not codified.
Nor is it posted. It has been posted previously, and I suppose it's been removed.
It is not codified.
Susan, are you there?
We are here.
Okay, did you hear my last comment?
My understanding is that there are people taking continuous recordings of the meeting from the front row.
Correct.
Are these people disrupting the meeting in any way?
No.
No, not that I can see. Not at this, let me say, not at this point.
As long as they are not disruptive, at this time, we would recommend that you let them continue what they're doing.
Okay.
We will provide a more further memorandum or opinion, but for this time, given that there's no disruption, we are due just to let it be.
That's right.
If there's a disruption, it's absolutely appropriate to do what is necessary to oppose orders such as asking them to move to the back.
Okay, I can go along with that, thank you very much. Okay, I, you, I think everybody heard that, we'll go along with that. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Miller.
Meeting with WIFA. The second meeting was with WIFA. Trish Incognito and Melanie, who was substituting for Sarah Conrad, the contact with the project, attended. The WIFA meeting was both to discuss the outstanding wastewater treatment project and a possible new project to install solar at the water treatment plant at Town Hall. We first discussed the outstanding wastewater treatment plant. WIFA made clear that the ongoing Foster v. Courtside litigation was a source of profound concern. They see the town and its elected leadership as split. WIFA and the town closed on the loan in July 2013. WIFA wants to see the town get the money and proceed with the project. However, no funds will be released as long as the litigation is pending. Importantly, the terms of the loan agreement require that the money for construction be fully expended within three years, which was July 2016. Realistically, the town must begin the project no later than early 2015. After this date, the town will have to reapply for loan, for a loan, and a new rate will be set at the market rate at that time. Town Engineer Murphy indicated that there are some obstacles to immediately beginning the project, even if there were no litigation. Specifically, the project must now be repriced. He asked WIFA what the options were for seeking more funding from them. WIFA made clear that additional funds would most likely not be available to the town on this project, and if the town wants governmental agency participation, its best option is the USDA. This was frustrating news, because WIFA loans sometimes present the possibility of partial debt forgiveness. Nonetheless, WIFA did explain that if the project price increases, the town may submit an application for a new loan. It would take at least eight weeks to process, and the board meets every eight weeks. Financing is not an advisable option, refinancing is not an advisable option, because it would not extend the repayment term of 20 years. If additional financing is necessary, then WIFA should suggest that the town apply for a second loan. However, as long as there is litigation pending that affects the project, WIFA will not provide more loans. WIFA strongly advised that the town conduct a new cost analysis of the project only after the litigation is complete, because of the changing cost of materials and construction. The conversation then turned to a new solar project the town is considering. The town would like to install solar panels at Town Hall, in the parking area, and near the water treatment plant. WIFA's response to participating in this endeavor was very negative. First, WIFA said that it had no funding to participate in the Town Hall portion of the project. WIFA is now the lending agency for GADA funds that can be used for non-utility projects for communities, but currently, there are no GADA funds available. Second, because of the current status of the funded water treatment plant, the board is highly unlikely to move forward with any new project with the town. The essence of the discussion was that until the town can improve, can prove it is a functional partner that can complete projects, WIFA will not give the town any further resources. The town attorney said the town took the project so seriously that six of the seven members of council approved it on an emergency basis. The litigation is not about the project per se, but instead about the mayor's authority to veto the emergency measure. WIFA nonetheless emphasized that the solar project will not be analyzed on its own merits. Ultimately, WIFA applies EPA guidelines for its projects and looks at the financial, technical, legal, and managerial capabilities of the town. Because of the litigation and the town's history, WIFA does not have confidence in the town's management. The Courtside team made clear that they were present before WIFA to demonstrate the strength of the town's management capabilities and professionalism. WIFA said that when the litigation is resolved, it will still be included as part of the town's history to the board, but will not appear as negative. WIFA addressed the two-part application process for the solar project. During the first part of the process, WIFA staff merely reviews whether the applicant and project are eligible for WIFA participation. Later, the project will be evaluated by the board, and the concerns about town management capabilities and the litigation will block the project from being awarded. Although they did not encourage the Courtside team to begin the process, they made clear that in the first stage, the hold on the water treatment project will not have an impact. Part of WIFA's evaluation of such applications is that they are green, and such considerations are taken into account with respect to loan forgiveness options. Staff should seek direction from council as to whether it is worthwhile to commence the application process in order to get into WIFA's project queue, because the estimated savings to the town by converting the water treatment plant to solar are $35,000. In summary, one, the town is seen as a weak project partner by WIFA because of the litigation. Two, WIFA will not encourage or otherwise fund any projects with Courtside while the litigation continues. Three, WIFA is unlikely to fund or participate in future projects with Courtside if the wastewater treatment plant project fails. Four, WIFA will not withdraw the funds in two years, excuse me, pardon me, WIFA will withdraw the funds in two years if the project is not complete. Five, USDA is not going to provide any further grant money for the project despite the rising costs. Six, WIFA will require a second application to provide any additional loans for the project to cover the rising costs. Success in obtaining additional loans will be heavily dependent on the town's ability to share strong leadership in successfully moving the existing project forward. Seven, even projects with unanimous council support, strong community support, excellent managerial oversight, significant cost-saving opportunity, energy efficiency, and positive environmental impact are unlikely to receive any WIFA support unless the wastewater treatment project proceeds and succeeds. Eight, due to continued rising costs in construction, the delay in the construction for the wastewater treatment plant will create further challenges to our rate structure. The additional costs most likely will be funded through WIFA for a shorter term, 20 years, than USDA provides, 40 years. In addition, we continue to see significant deterioration of the wastewater treatment plant infrastructure that will require capital expenditures in the near future. These expenditures, once completed, will no longer be available for grant reimbursement and will be funded solely by loans if possible. Respectfully submitted, Skylar Miller.
Thank you, Skylar. Where do we go from here, Susan?
I can tell the agenda allow you to discuss this, and the implications of this memorandum as well as the litigation, and if you would like to direct staff in any way, you certainly may.
Thank you.
Mike, I would like to open this up for public discussion as well.
How about we do our discussion first, then open it for public? That sounds more reasonable to me.
Yes, sir. I have a question about the litigation. Since the mayor did file the appeal, what is the expectations of how long that appeal process will take in court, please?
The appeal will be fully briefed by mid-August. Either party may seek leave to have oral arguments, which would be granted or denied by the court, and will be scheduled by the Court of Appeals in Phoenix. And then, are you also there?
Yep.
Sorry, our phone is strange, I had a momentary panic. And it typically takes six to nine months for the Court of Appeals to have a ruling. So, I think that soonest we would have a ruling is next spring, certainly not before Christmas.
Oh, my God.
So, possibly as much as a year from now, in other words?
That's correct.
So, we can't possibly meet any of these deadlines?
No.
Also, we know to date that this litigation has already expended $17,600, at least, to this part, for this part of the year. Could you give me a brief analysis of what the process is gonna additionally cost the town for the appeal process?
We will be writing response brief, we have started that. The response brief requires certain research on unique issues that are only relevant to appeals. Most of the legal arguments are similar. We're hoping that the response will be approximately half of what the prior costs will be, and then if there are oral arguments, that could take it so that it's almost equivalent to what's already been spent. So, I think that you should think of it as probably we are halfway there, and you will spend the same amount again. I'm roughly estimating, because I don't know for sure what will happen, we're at the beginning of the process, but that is my rough estimate.
So, roughly $34,000 extra for this town, for this litigation. Okay, thank you. That was my last question.
First of all, we heard that the reason that the litigation was, we didn't know where the loan was coming from. We heard that several times. Then after that was clarified, now a list of demands has been presented to us to do away with the, for him to drop the litigation. We know the sewer rates had to be raised, it wasn't our fault, they were done in the past, and it happened. We decided to try with water rates. We had an intent to let the people know we were thinking about it. Something was thrown at us in that direction, that wanted all the stuff to go along with it. We weren't raising them, we were just gonna let the people know we were thinking about it. Where's this gonna stop? What are we gonna do? We've gotta have this done.
I agree, these rates do need to be adjusted, I mean, the water sewer treatment system and the water system under... I mean, the water sewer treatment system and the water system under Arizona law are supposed to be self-supporting, not profit makers, but self-supporting. They have been supported in great part by, how do you want to call them, loans from the town and just outright payment from general funds, from WIFA funds, and from everywhere else. Earth funds, I'm sorry, not WIFA. I mispoke. But thing is, every business in town raises their rates as their costs go up. I don't care what kind of business you're in, if your costs go up, you don't raise your prices, you're out of business. You go bankrupt. Your bills are more than your income. And yet, when the town has to do it because we haven't raised rates in many years for whatever reason, then all of a sudden, we're in deep trouble from, you know, a segment of the public. You can't do this to us. You'll drive us out of business. Now, I bet if you went back and checked, those businesses themselves raised their rates as their costs went up. So I don't know where the problem lies. Yes, there have been some large increases on many of the RV parks because many of them have been given under several previous administrations, special rates. There was one RV park, I will not, will not leave it. They were paying less per month for 200 spaces for sewer than a single-family dwelling was paying here in town.
Counsel, I'm so sorry I interrupted. The actual issue of water rates is not on the agenda. It's tangential. We thought we'd let you go for a little while, but honestly, you, to discuss the litigation and to discuss meeting with USDA and WIFA.
Okay.
And you are my direct staff to bring the rate issue as it connects to these, to the next council agenda item if you'd like, but we have to limit your discussion on that.
Okay, I'm sorry. I should know better.
Mike, I want to reread one, just tiny paragraph. The town attorney said the town took this project so seriously that six of the seven members of council approved it on an emergency basis. The litigation is not about the project per se, but instead about the mayor's ability to veto the emergency measure. We're not even arguing over the project. What Mayor Foster is claiming is that his one vote outranks the six of us or whoever is sitting in these six seats. Is that, is that correct? Is that how, that's how I read it?
Actually, it's two votes because he voted no as a member of council. Then he turns around and votes no a second time by vetoing.
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, and I think Councilmember Timberlake, the judge told him exactly that.
Yeah.
At the hearing when the case was dismissed.
And that was what the judge said too.
Because he did vote nay on the issue, he could not turn around and veto it.
Yeah, because he votes as a member of council, he doesn't have to veto that.
Well, so in a nutshell, we're stuck, and we've got to figure out something to do.
It would seem to me that if this community wanted a king instead of a council, that's what we would have, but that's just my thought.
Wait a minute.
I would like to open it up for public discussion.
Susan, what can we do about that? What can we do about it except twiddle our thumbs, unfortunately?
Well, we have been trying to think of what you could do, but the, the litigation does not invalidate the action that was taken by the council. It simply means that the town attorneys cannot give the opinion that there's no litigation affecting the project, affecting the loan, and because there is. So I don't, we don't, we, as we've told you, we don't really have a way out except to litigation.
Okay.
We would love to be able to settle it, but we haven't been able to come up with a viable offer. As you're aware, Mayor Foster made a settlement offer.
Yeah, like pay off.
And that was discussed in executive session, so you're familiar with what happened in the executive session. But at any rate, there's never been a vote to move forward on any formal offer in open session as would be required to settle this case. Mayor Foster certainly has the option at any time he so chooses to withdraw the appeal or to withdraw his position that he would veto this specific emergency item. And if he took that position, either position, that would allow us to move forward with the project immediately.
That means right now, immediately, today?
Yeah.
Okay.
A question for them. Patricia, the settlement that the mayor offered us, could we have a copy brought to that? Can we make that public?
It's already public.
Where?
It was on the internet.
It's been on the internet.
All right. Could we get, there's a lot of people that are on the internet that don't know.
What we said in there is not public, obviously.
No.
The document is public.
Document itself, yeah, I mean, it's on the internet, it's public.
All right, can we get a copy of it so all people can see it? Not everybody has internet.
Well, it's easy to get, you know.
I don't have my copy with me, otherwise I'd be there.
Can we get it, please?
If I may be excused from counsel.
Mr. Miller, do you have copies of the memorandum for the people? I heard that you read it, but some of them might.
Mary?
There are several copies that have been circulated.
My concern is that it was really long, and you read it, and I'm sure they had questions, but you went on to the next page. But if they have it, and we'll be opening it up to the public to make an out.
If we are short copies in the ground, I can make some. There are some available.
Okay, so we're going to wait.
He's going to get it, yes.
Yeah, we'll wait until Mr. Miller comes back with copies of that agreement offer from Mayor Foster, and then after that's been passed down, people have had a chance to look at it, then we will open it to the public. Okay, oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Well, easy way out is to bring all our.
Somebody that's good at speaking.
I still say the lady mayor was the best, she got anything in the case. Because she listened to everybody and made a decision. She's not listening to people at all.
Yeah, yeah. Well, he's got a lot of money, first of all, he was.
But Sean told me in the RV park, I don't want to stop the law. She says, that is a link. Because she didn't want it to stop.
Have you photographed before from the front row?
You don't, you don't, you're not watching yourself.
I wish you'd wake up to the fact that he's.
Yes, he's always, people want to.
Yeah, I know that.
He told me that five or six years.
He wants us to lose the loan and everything else.
Ain't gonna happen.
Lose the loan. That's going to cost us.
It's already costing us.
I know, it's going to be worse.
$17,000, nearly about $35,000.
I would vote out.
How much?
I haven't got one.
I have seen it.
It's loud and buzzing.
Because I can remember you had your.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
The attorney, did you hear the attorney say? You should only be talking about what's on the agenda.
The copies for the general public are being printed. I guess the machine isn't as fast as I thought it was. Either had to be reloaded with paper.
Neither is my searching. Mrs. Kipels.
Okay, we back on the record.
Are we okay to re-disence the record, Patricia?
Are we okay to go back on the record, Patricia or Susan?
Great, we're here.
Okay, yeah, we're back on the record. Any more discussion from council?
I have a few comments.
Well, my question was, is I can read?
And I'm trying to get this close because I do hear comments that can't hear me. Basically, we're having this special meeting, going over a lot of things that we've already gone over, but also to bring council and the public up to date, you know, what it's costing us, where we are now, the fact that the cost of the project is going up, there may be a need, you know, even to borrow more money to complete this project. Other projects are on hold, such as the solar probably, because of what they see as instability of our town government because of this loss due to disaster. I think you read a lot, if that's what I got out of it, that's what I got out of your memo.
Yes, there are, there are some small projects that are still viable, and there's three things that can come up, but, you know, ADQ has set a capacity limitation for us. Anything that has not already been calculated into that, you know, we can't expand upon, we can't extend past that, past that mark. So there's, so there's some infill that we can do. But as far as, as far as this project is concerned, it is, it's a lynchpin for future development for the town on the whole. So if we can't get this done in a timely manner, we are looking at, you know, some pretty serious implications because of that. I took the opportunity to go meet with USDA and WIFA along with other members of town staff, for one, just to get myself up to speed, to get everybody on the same page, and based on the information we received, that I felt I warranted a memo to the town council. So I know several members of you are concerned, and that's why we have this meeting today. But this is an accurate, accurate documentation of the events of those meetings and the implications of it.
And the new things that have happened, plus the expenses that were going on?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments, discussion?
Well, I don't have much to read as in the record. Oh, I.
Well, the, I would give clarification first.
You have a much louder voice than I do. Thank you.
You're talking about the.
Yes.
Yeah, I would ask clarification on that.
Yeah, before you read it, since we're there now.
Yeah, before you read it, since we're there now.
Susan?
Here, we're here.
Okay, it has been requested that one of us, and it looks like Fink is appointing me, read this settlement offer from Mayor Foster into the record.
You can, you can make that public, yeah.
Okay. You or I, vice mayor? Yeah, I'll, I'll do it. I've read stuff in the record before. People say I've got a loud voice, so. This is dated April 9, 2014, and it is addressed to the town attorneys, two of which we have on, on the phone with us. Read settlement offer pursuant to Rule 408 Arizona.